Common Council Meeting to order. It is Tuesday, September 15th, 2015. It is 7:00 PM. And can I get a confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice?
The meeting was noticed here at City Hall at the Piggly Wiggly and Dave's Ace Hardware.
Thank you. Item number two, approval of agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Do I have a second? There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We have an agenda. Item number three, presentation by YMCA for the 2015 Scholarship Recipients.
I can go without this right here.
Yeah, it's permanently on.
Okay.[55.78][55.78](laughing) I know I've got a pretty loud voice, so anyways. Well, good evening. My name is Tom Dimbord, Director of YMCA, both the downtown Janesville location and the Parker YMCA. This is my second as I come around twice a year to kind of give you an update on how your dollars were used. City's been very gracious to us the last several years with a $2,000 grant that's used for scholarshiping kids in Milton only who can't afford sometimes the program fees to participate in various programs. As you know, it's here in May where most of the dollars and the first $1,000 was used for the youth sports program, soccer, baseball, flag football. And we just concluded our summer camp season with another 55 kids with the average gift somewhere between $10 and $25. What we try to do is cap it at $25 so that we can take your dollars and spread them wide as thin as possible because the application for aid are far exceeding the amount that we can award. So we try to do that on a very fair consistent basis. So overall through August 30th, we concluded our campaign with your grant, $2,000. Over 92 kids received some partial aid from this $2,000 and participated both in youth sports and our summer camp program. I do want to bring up Greg Linder. Oh, he's just going to sit, I guess. I got to nod, so (laughing). We do have 25 people on our board, and we have five people in particular from the board who focus just on raising money for the Parker YMCA in Milton. Greg Linder is part of that committee. Steve Juckworth, Board President from Diamond Center. Dan Hoddle. Steve Bysted and Barb Borner from Berstein. So they weren't here tonight, but Greg will say a few words on behalf of the volunteers of the committee. Or now he will.
Now, I guess I will.[159.56][159.56](laughing) And I just want to echo Tom's sentiments and say thank you for what you have contributed to the Y. I think it's been a big benefit to the city of Milton to have the Parker YMCA out there. And the reason I'm still such a supporter and will be even in my relaxing retirement is that it does benefit families and children primarily. So, thanks again, and I hope you will continue to support the Y.
And now with the words, we'll put a little video here of a little action behind it. See the kids in action throughout the summer. I appreciate the applause, but the person responsible is Matt Gibson here, our Camp Director, so let's give him a hand. Put him together.[433.01][433.01](applause) That kind of technology is out of my realm, so. Again, I want to thank you for your partnership and your support. Is there any questions while I'm here or anything? Or? No?
I was just wondering if you guys go on to...
Sorry. Do you go on the trails, the local trails, any biking or the Ice Age Trail? And do you have some form of transportation when the kids, you know, I mean, do you have a bus? Because I don't think I've ever seen one.
Yeah, there is a one, 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 excuse me, one field trip a week, and it's all provided with a bus service. That's once a week. And we haven't used bicycles because of the logistics and the insurance with that. And the trails, we have not used to the capacity, I think, which you're leading towards, but it's one of those things that, you know, you hate to say it, when they had that annual field trip each week, not to say the trails are not exciting, but they're looking for some kind of activity. And, you know, one of the things we find out, kids set up for camp, but the parents want to know when the field trip is. And a lot of kids want a field trip every day, so (laugh), which we can't afford. So, answer your question, though, we have not used the trails, but it's always in our think tank. But then from a marketing standpoint, kids are usually looking for something that's a little bit different. They like the bowling, the splash pad they love. That's kind of, they could go there every day and have a gale time, but it's once a week there, so that's kind of where I live with that, so. If not, thank you for your partnership, your support, and another great year. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Okay. Item number four, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. We do not have anybody signed in to speak at this time. Item number five, approval of the consent agenda. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number six, public hearing and action on adoption of new floodplain regulations to ordinance 79, floodplain district FEMA requirement. Howie, go ahead.
Okay. We had received notice from the DNR that we had to upgrade our ordinance, with chapter 79, which is our floodplain ordinance. We needed, you know, just to adopt some changes to it. I think you all received copies of those. It was at Plan Commission tonight, and they had recommended unanimously to City Council to approve the chapter 79 changes. If this is adopted with their changes, then residents in the city are eligible to receive floodplain, the FEMA insurance for floods if this is passed. But this was a model ordinance from the DNR. The DNR did look at this, and they were okay with the changes that we made, that we would be, you know, up to whatever their modern requirements are for this, for our ordinance changes. There were no comments at the public hearing at the Plan Commission on the changes, and as I said, they did unanimously approve that. If this is approved, we were asking that the second and third, to waive the second and third hearings so that we could send this into the DNR for approval, so.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Is there any public comment?
Oh, there wasn't, yeah. We didn't really, there wasn't a public hearing for here, that was just for Plan Commission.
Oh, oh, okay.
But it was just, I think the ordinance was just, is just in the agenda that we had the public hearing at Plan Commission for it.
There is no public hearing?
I mean, we agendize it that way, we can open a public hearing if somebody wants to speak, which I don't think there is, and we can close it.
Okay, close the public hearing. Is there a motion? And a waiver of the second and third reading?
I'll make that motion to approve the ordinance 79, and then waive the second and third reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number seven, discussion and possible action on resolution 2015-20 authorizing the submittal of a 2016 urban forestry grant from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources.
This item is a resolution that the council would need to adopt in order for us to apply for the urban forestry grant. We brought this forth to the Plan Commission last week. This item is a grant that we apply for on an annual basis that allows us to do a variety of tasks in the community related to forestry, urban forestry, and things of that nature, Arbor, Amber Lashmore. It requires a 50% match, but the nice part about this grant is that we can use our time and resources as our match for this. So there wouldn't be an additional cost to this grant above and beyond what is already budgeted for the Operations Department in regards to forestry. So what we would need this evening is the approval of file resolution 2015-20 authorizing the submittal of the grant, so we can put that grant application forward and hope to receive that for 2016 activities.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number eight, discussion and possible action on the North Street resurfacing and Crossridge Park trail extension proposals.
This is a follow-up item from the council meeting back in early September in which we brought forth a number of potential street projects that we would like to see accomplished yet in 2015, as well as a kind of a precursor to some projects in early 2016. If you recall, these projects are, we're able to accomplish these projects due to savings that we've recognized through various other street repaving projects throughout the year, including the Parkview Drive. And what we brought forth tonight is two projects in which we received proposals from qualified contractors. That is the North Street resurfacing, as well as the Crossridge Park Trail Extension. And you'll see those proposals within your packet, and we're recommending that those proposals be accepted to the lowest bidder for those respective projects. So what we would need this evening from the council would be a motion to accept the proposals from Frank Brothers for the Crossridge Park Trail Extension in the amount of $10,448, and the proposal from Rock Road Companies to resurface North Street in the amount of $11,138.12. And if there's any questions, Howie and I should be able to tackle those for you.
I make a motion that we approve.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding resolution 2015-21 advancing $104,294 from the sewer fund to the general fund.
What this is, is an opportunity to save a little bit of money, $1,200 over the next two years, to do some inner-city borrowing between funds to pay off some leases, so we aren't paying a leasing company. We pay ourselves at about half the interest rate, and the sewer fund would retain the interest earnings. So if you've got any questions.
Have we done this in the past?
Inner fund borrowing?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a, this is a fairly common practice. You know, this is a scenario in which Dan looked to creatively utilize, you know, our inner fund borrowing to save the city a little bit of money. And although, you know, as Dan pointed out, it's only $1,200 over two years, as we get into the budget discussions here in the month of October, $1,200 is a big deal. So, you know, I appreciate these types of, this kind of creative approach that Dan's brought, and I think it's, you know, a worthwhile endeavor with a little bit of activity, and we can, you know, save a little bit of money in the end.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. All right. Our next meeting is Tuesday, October 6th, 2015, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers here. Are there any general items? Two minutes.
No.[1021.32][1021.32](laughing) I have a question about our scheduling for the budget workshops. Have we done anything with that?
Well, you stole a little bit of my thunder from the city administrator report, but that's okay. You know, I've kept the council up to speed as much as we can throughout the process that's kind of led us to this point through my weekly updates, and I know a couple of you have come into the office and sat down, and we've had one-on-one conversations, which have been, you know, very helpful for Dan and I to gain that perspective and hopefully helpful in return as folks kind of see the process unfold and how we get to there. You know, this year is not much different than any other year, but it is unique in and of itself because every year is unique for a couple of reasons. One, just the financial constraints that we're under, and two, we're under a little bit of a potential time crunch this year as well with the likelihood that I will be, you know, not as accessible towards the end of October. So what Dan and I had talked about, and we talked about this with the mayor as well, is maybe moving that process up a little bit if the council is interested in doing so, as early as potentially having one of our first budget study sessions on September 29th, which is a, which is a Tuesday evening, but we're fortunate this month to have five Tuesdays. So if the council would be interested in having that discussion, it could be, you know, however short or long the council wishes to be. You know, one of the things that I will point out, one caveat that I will point out, is that although we would have that discussion on September 29th, there is a possibility we wouldn't have all of the final information in regards to highway aid and things of that nature, but we should have a pretty darn complete picture by September 29th. I'd say, you know, 95% or greater that we would know all of the facets that go into it. So if that's something that the council would be interested in, you know, we can look to schedule, you know, a macro budget discussion or macro budget presentation on September 29th, and then start to drill down from there, maybe on a weekly basis thereafter. I look back to the schedule that we did last year, and I think we met, I think we met, only met twice. We scheduled four meetings if necessary, but I think we only ended up meeting twice. And we had those, I think we had those meetings at the same night as council meetings, but I'd have to, I'd have to, do you remember?
I think so. Before.
She wasn't even on the council, she remembers.[1170.01][1170.01](laughing)
Great job.
But yeah, I think that was my recollection as well. I was very new at that time, and was, you know, everything seemed new to me then, so. So if that's something the council's interested in, we could look to have one as early as September 29th.
I think we should, in my humble opinion.[1188.82][1188.82](laughing)
My humble opinion and head shake is yeah.[1192.66][1192.66](laughing)
Okay.
So.
Well, we can, we can look to, we can look to schedule a, schedule a time for that, you know, September 29th at 6:00 PM or something like that. We'll follow up with an email to everybody to, so we can get it on your calendar as soon as possible. But, you know, what Dan and I talked about real briefly before the meeting is, you know, we got some, we got some additional good news today, which I, you know, we always temper that with the fact that we don't have all the information. So for every good piece of information, there's likely going to be a bad piece of information down the line, too. So we don't have insurance rates yet. We don't have our final insurance numbers, for health insurance and property insurance and liability insurance. So those are still some kind of floating numbers out there, but we did receive good news on our expenditure restraint number. So, you know, the budget is still a work in progress, but by the 29th, I think we'll be in pretty good shape. And, you know, outside of those last couple of small pieces of information that I said, I don't see a whole lot changing between now and then, but obviously, you know, that's a whole lot changing between now and then in the budget that would be presented to the council. The council then can change it however they see fit, but at that point, you know, it's on my hands.[1264.51][1264.51](laughing)
And there'll be state numbers that come in mid to late October, early November. We get our equalization ratio sometime in early November, but since this was a full revaluation year, I'm anticipating that our equalized value will be very close to the assessed value, because that's the way it should work.
Yes.
And I don't see that not happening based on everything that I've got received from Accurate and that kind of thing, so.
Okay. Any other general items?
That was a long one.[1302.44][1302.44](laughing)
Totally over the two minutes. Mayor and elder person reports. We'll just go down the line for elder person reports? Anybody? Nancy?
Yes. Thank you. Like to, the Ad-Hoc Committee has been doing such a wonderful job of getting the facts and all these things together. I would like to extend the Ad-Hoc Committee's authority to the criteria and the timeframe to establish a review for the city administrator and the city clerk, because these have been discussed, but never a coordinated timeframe and criteria of what is going to be asked put together. I would like to, you know, have their, the Ad-Hoc Committee extended to do that.
So do you want them to determine a process for the review?
Correct.
Okay, so not do, actually do the review, but determine the process of the review.
Determine the process would be where we would start, because we do not have that process.
Formalized?
Listed.
Okay, all right.
And?
Just one second on that. Does there have to be an agenda item for the council to vote on to extend the, so we would put that on the next agenda? Okay, go ahead.
And I have a polite request that when our agendas are sent to us, I can't drop this into iBooks. The one, the format that is coming to me does not drop into iBooks. Either I'm doing something wrong, or my computer's doing something wrong, either of which may be true.
Okay, so you would like some assistance with that?
I would like, yes. One or the other of our formats changed, yes.
Okay. So we can have you, we can just have you bring in your iPad to city and see if we can help you with it?
Just do the text.
Okay, all right.
And also, Nancy, they have, they have a lot of people up at the library that help with this kind of stuff, too, that might be able to, to help you out with that, I know.
Because I'm just going to do this, and it isn't coming up.
And it's a great, it's one of those great things that our library has to offer. And I would also like to just remind everybody that we have our prairie seed collection October 17th from 10 o'clock until 1:00. That is a Saturday, and it's, it's a very interesting and relaxing event for groups and individuals.
And I just want to thank the council for participating in our True Colors communication training tonight and team building, and we'll follow up with some more training, and we'll continue to learn about how to have a great overall organizational effectiveness, especially as we move into the budget process. This will be really helpful, but it was nice to spend some time with all you guys, and I appreciate you coming in early and doing that. Also, Cory Olson had her going away party tonight, and it was nice to see so many people from the community there, and some of the council members were able to attend in between meetings. So I just want to say publicly how much we've appreciated all the time and effort that Cory has put in to running the Milton House over the years. We appreciate her so much. We will miss, miss her, and we look forward to her replacement working with the city for years to come. And that's all I have. Is there any more?
Could I?
Oh, and we have a new baby in the family.[1545.94][1545.94](laughing) Inga had a baby girl on Friday. Guinevere?
Guinevere.
Guinevere. Beautiful, healthy, already home. Had her out at the party tonight. I missed her, but congratulations to Inga and her husband. Anything else that anybody can think of?
Can I, I hope that when Al's turn comes, he covers a report on QuickTrip.[1569.36][1569.36](laughing)
Okay, so we're going to go to staff reports, and then we'll come back to Al. I think nobody else has anything. City Administrator, you want to go now?
You want a report on QuickTrip?
There was an understanding that they had had some kind of accident. Is that a true statement?
Yeah, I mean, they, they had a, they had an accident, I believe, in which some of their trusses blew down, and they had...
Are they delayed?
Oh, no, not that I'm aware. They brought that to my attention. I mean, if it's, you know, a construction accident on private property, I don't, I wouldn't expect them to contact me and tell me about it. I mean, it's no different than...
Yes, sir.
Okay. I haven't heard anything.
No, I would not expect them to contact me and talk to me about an accident on private property. That would not be germane to my, my role at all. Why would they contact me?
Howie, did you hear from them?
They had a construction incident with, just with some trusses that fell down, and just, you know, no one, no one had any serious injuries or anything, but they're back working, and they're back putting up the walls, and they're, they're continuing construction. And they did some footing work today, and they're, they're, they're doing their regular work now. They're, they didn't, when I was out there for a different footing inspection, they didn't seem like they were going to be delayed, so.
Thank you. That was really the question. Thank you.
But the private things that happened, like Al said, they didn't tell us anything about that, so.
It would be HIPAA violation as well.
Joint Fire Department is not here. Chief of the Police Department?
Coffee with the chief tomorrow at Charming Beads from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM. So the public is more than welcome to stop in and introduce themselves, and we can have a conversation. So hope to see some people there.
Anything else exciting going on?
No.[1694.66][1694.66](laughing) And I like it that way.[1696.66][1696.66](laughing)
Okay, city clerk, deputy treasurer. I was quiet. Director of Public Works?
Hydrant flushing starts at the end of the month. Leaf collection starts the first week of October, and brush collection goes on for the next two, next week and a half. And Splash Park, this will be the last week that it's open, so.
Howie, have you heard anything about when the railway's going to fix the track?
They've delivered the, some of the equipment over here on the, you know, over by Highway 26, and so they are still supposed to be end of September, first part of October, so.
Okay, no director? No director of the library, finance director?
Excuse me, mayor?
Yep.
I could give the report for the director of the library.
Okay.
Lisa is not here tonight because we have a fundraiser slash open house with the Corn Growers Association at the library tonight, and if we all get done in time, then everyone is invited to stop over.
Thanks. Finance director?
Not much. Al kind of stole some of the thunder on the, on the budget, but, but like you said, there is some, we've gotten good news, there's bad news, and before we finalize the thing, we'll probably have a final wrap-up, something for another budget-related in early November, when we, whenever we determine that public hearing, which will probably be right before Thanksgiving. be right before Thanksgiving, similar to last year, just because I want to make sure we have all the final numbers, and the state has until November 15th to get us some of those, so.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Item number 21, motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much.